And here, does that hand out?
Oh, yes.
So I'm here again because many of you are new or have been away and haven't given, haven't received this update on what's going on with the collection system. So some of you have seen this before. And stop me and ask questions as we go through it. I want to make sure, you know, I make this clear. I know this is what I do day in and day out, but to you, this is not second nature. So I want to make sure I answer any questions. So Busiris right now is under an administrative order with US EPA. And that document was signed in September of 2015. And that was a Phase One of multiple phases to reduce CSOs, which are combined sewer overflows into the Sandusky River or any, any water bodies. So what are CSOs and what is your collection system? That's the bottom half of the first page. Wastewater is collected throughout the system and funneled to an interceptor. The primary interceptor runs along the Sandusky River. There's one on the west side and one coming from the south. Those are shown in red, just very, it's a sketch on top of a street map. But they all go to the wastewater treatment plant where Tim Wood handles the flow and where Terry previously handled the flow. There are 22 combined sewer overflows. I know the city has worked to close a few of them. For all practical purposes, right now, they're still considered open. US EPA hasn't been officially told, but they're closed as far as allowing significant wet weather flow out. The city is also, portions of the city are separate sanitary, meaning only the sanitary flow gets into the collection system. Portions have catch basins where it shall allow the rainfall to enter into the system. So when it happens, let's go to the next slide. I think that'll explain. Top of the second page, what are combined sewer overflows? So the sketch on the left is in gray is the original sewers that were routed towards the river many, many years ago. And yellow is the interceptor sewer, which is to grab or intercept that flow and get it to the plant. So on the left is showing in blue, the low flow continues through the path into the interceptor and goes to the treatment plant. And under low flow conditions, when it's not raining or when the snow is not melting, nothing should go to the river. But on the right, what happens when it rains is the combined sewers carry more flow. They're carrying your sanitary sewer and your rainfall that gets into the system through the catch basins. And it can exceed the capacity of the interceptor. So the system was built to relieve it by allowing it to overflow to the river. And what US EPA is after is to reduce the volume and the frequency of these overflows. And the bottom of the second page, the CSO compliance background. This all stems from the Clean Water Act from 1972. And part of that is a pollutant discharge elimination system related to the wastewater treatment plant, which you guys have a plan in place to manage that. And the combined sewer overflow policy, which is what's driving the administrative order you have right now. So the history is, prior to 2010, and really prior to my involvement with the city, you were kind of under Ohio EPA. They were looking at your numbers, regulating, you know, what happened at the plant, the number of overflows, and it wasn't. They just kind of oversaw it. And then US EPA stepped in because you had 22 CSOs in a relatively small city. And that raises a red flag because the CSO policy says that you should have significantly fewer activations in a year, meaning only when it really rained should those activate. And the volume was much too high for a small community. So between 2008 and 2010, US EPA got involved and the city started negotiating with them, looking at feasible alternatives. How do we, how do we reduce the, the volume that overflows? What can we do with that wet weather? And we submitted a plan to US EPA in 2010 of, you know, the first round of how to, some solutions on how to fix this. Between 2011 and 2015, negotiations with US EPA come and go. And as we're even experiencing right now, you know, they, they kind of trail off and they leave you alone for a little bit and you're wondering what they're thinking. And this is, this happened significantly in those four years. It was a lot of waiting and wondering where they were going. And then there'd be some discussions and we'd provide some additional information. Then we'd wait. And it wasn't really until 2015 that the negotiations really picked up and got finalized. And that's when Phase One was signed. So Phase One is ideally one of three phases. So between 2015 and today, we've been implementing those Phase One projects. And we'll talk about those on the next page. And we've also, right now, in the last year, been developing and negotiating what will be the Phase Two projects. So we flip to the third page. The Phase One projects, and you may be aware, you may not, of what's been going on. One of the first things that happened was signs were put up at all the CSO locations. You know, so if you walk towards the river on, I think it's on Rensselaer, there's a sign posted close to the river, you know, a public notice saying this is a CSO. If you should, you know, there's a phone number you can call. That had to be posted. That was a pretty simple correction. The Buffalo Run Sewer and the main interceptor inspected, which meant a camera was run through the system to look for defects, to look for sources of flow that weren't expected, you know. If there's a significant amount of flow coming in through the top of the pipe, through a crack, those were identified. But there was some trouble getting through certain sections of the interceptor, primarily where it went under the river in one location. So that could be an issue that we'll talk about on a couple pages. And per US EPA, we have been submitting biannual reports or every six months. We give them an update. The big improvement projects, as you're probably aware, the Upper Buffalo Storm Detention Basin, the improvements on Southern and Hopely, the improvements on the neighboring areas close to Southern and Hopely, and then the Plymouth Street Storm Sewer Separation, which was in conjunction with ODOT. So those were some big projects you guys completed. In addition, the state took initiative to do some projects on their own, to do some storm sewer separation in a couple areas in the city. The Crawford, West Marion, West Perry, and then Wetstone and East Mansfield. And more recently, I think it was last summer, the river was dredged under Mansfield Bridge to ideally bring the river level down and not have the river be as much of an issue at some of the gates on the CSOs. So the benefits, and I'm taking this from what Tim Wood mentioned happened at the plant. He noticed that when it rains, the, the plant flow elevates when it rains. He has to treat more volume. He says it returns to a normal volume quicker now, which is a huge plus. So it's less chemicals that are spent, less process time, and less wear and tear on the equipment. And there's also, the inspections identified a large piece of debris in the interceptor. And Terry, you might have even been part of that. That was removed, which freed up some capacity, which allowed more flow through rather than getting plugged. Picture it, you know, something was blocking flow. So it was going to naturally back up out of CSOs or worst case into someone's basement. So some of the benefits in the collection system were decreased water basement complaints. And the city became a little more proactive on doing some maintenance, which is another good thing. And top of page four. So those were the projects that were implemented in Phase One. And the end of Phase One was the, okay, now guys, let's figure out Phase Two. That's what US EPA asked for. So they were asking for Phase Two to be a five-year plan, which would be starting in 2023 through 2028, ending at, beginning in 2028. And the goal, and this is a very ambitious goal, was to move 50% of the CSO volume. So 50% of the volume that comes out of those outfall pipes in a year, in a typical year. Right now, there's about 500 million, 500 million gallons. And that number's got to come down. That's going to be hard to achieve, I won't lie. That's, that's a lot of volume. And then again, start thinking about the Phase Three plan. So after doing some flow monitoring, we have a hydraulic model that helps us look at what-if scenarios. If it rains, how much rainfall can we apply? What happens at all of the CSOs? How much volume? What if we do improvements in this neighborhood versus that neighborhood? What's the benefit? The city came up with a couple of proposed Phase Two plans. So these all have to be reviewed with US EPA. We have to get their buy-in. And it also ties back to the monetary impacts of this too. But some of the planning and management type proposed Phase Two plans include investigating river intrusion and what that means. That there's two small images on the right. Those are the actual gates that open up and allow flow from the collection system and go into the river. And these were taken on dry days. And the bottom left one, you can see the gate submerged. And what the city is finding in some initial investigations is there's water coming back in. We don't want to treat that water. We don't want to send that to the plant. That's wasteful. We need to find a way, whether it's something hydraulically or raising that so it sits out of the water, sealing it better, changing the type of gate. There's, there's a couple ways to take care of that. But that's something the city found more recently is that, hey, there's, there's a lot of water coming in. And it shouldn't be. And how do we mitigate this? So that's definitely part of Phase Two. And that's a relatively, I don't want to say cost effective because we don't know yet what the volume reduction will be. But it, in the grand scheme, it's a simpler project to tackle. And then I know Jeff Dunn and the utilities guys have been doing some work to remove some large sources of inflow, large parking lots that are erroneously connected to the sanitary and could be just discharged to a creek or a ditch. So he's been working on areas like that. And we're hopeful that'll make a decent dent, but it's not the end-all, be-all solution. But small pieces, that's what we're going after right now, is those easy, cost-effective improvements. Some of the bigger projects though, on top of, even though they're listed as river and large inflow, would be reconfiguring the hydraulics in the system. And this would be changing some of the internal structures to better hold back flow and not let it go into the river. The bigger two projects would be some sort of facility at the wastewater treatment plant that can handle wet weather. There's a lot of unknowns on that as far as what's the best outcome. And that's why we're leaning into a wastewater treatment plant feasibility study. It'll look at options. It's a study. It'll give us ideas on, is it best to rebuild part of the plant and include high-rate treatment or some kind of wet weather treatment? Is it best to have it separated? Where should it be? And in addition, how can we accommodate future growth? Is the plant needing to be over rehabbed? Are there issues with processes or equipment that are going to fail? What's the best way to move forward with the treatment plant? So that study is also very helpful because that's necessary to have that study in your hands for some of the funding that's out there. So that's, that should be starting soon. That study will take nine months to a year. There's a lot to take into that one. And then another project in Phase Two will be additional sewer separation or storm redirection. And those are projects that are still to be, I guess, blessed by US EPA, depending on what kind of feedback we get on those. There's some on the Southern Avenue area to pull some of the storm flow off, yes.
In my former life, I was talking to a
Okay.
We had a water system
Should I start over? Okay. We had Lynn Lair, which is a housing development out east of town. And it had its own package plant. And we found probably, well, I'm not going to give you a number because I know it's going to be wrong, several, several homes that had the sump pump tied into the sewer. Do you suppose that could be an issue here as well?
That could be. And the, the challenge with any community is finding them. And then also, I know in some neighborhoods, like if you head out just east of here, the houses are so close. What do you do with that sump? You're going to put it right in the neighbor's yard. But that, that is a, a concern. That's something we can look into more also. But the trick is always, how many of those do we have to catch to really see a big impact downstream? But that very much could be happening here, yes. Any other questions? Okay. So top of page five, and I promise we're almost done. The timeline. So we submitted a draft list and proposal to US EPA in June of 2021. We asked for more than five years because financially, it's not feasible to do this in five years. And constructability wise, it's not feasible to do it in five years. To construct a major wet weather treatment facility at the plant will take five years in itself. Between pre-design, bidding, design, construction, follow-up, it's just not feasible. And what US EPA is asking for to remove in terms of volume, that is a significant portion of achieving that goal, is getting that wet weather treatment facility. And they haven't commented on that eight years yet. They haven't said no. They had some questions. We're currently responding, but it's tricky because we want the results of the treatment plant assessment because that will feed in. We don't want the city to commit to something and then get that assessment back that says you absolutely need a new plant, or no, you don't. And we've already written something to US EPA. So we're trying to negotiate and find a fine line between how do we start projects to keep them happy and keep you guys moving forward without committing to something we have to backtrack on. And the evaluation of the river intrusion and the large inflow source. We don't know the benefits yet. So it's also hard to incorporate that into the plan. So we will continue talking with US EPA as we can. I know the mayor has invited them to come visit the city. Because I think there's a lot of benefit in them meeting the people and seeing, you know, that you're not made of money here. We can't just spend and do it all in five years. And like I said, it's all dependent. We do a financial capability analysis to support all this. And I know we had another gentleman from Arcadis present last summer on, you know, what this does on the rate structure and long-term funding. I won't speak to that. He's the expert. But that also plays into how we negotiate with US EPA. So the next steps are to, we have some report writing to do. We need to update that financial capability analysis as much as we can. And then we will start on the facility assessment, hopefully this month. And then we negotiate the projects and the timing with US EPA because right now they're thinking January 2023 is the start for Phase Two. And the last page is just a schedule of what we had proposed to US EPA, the different projects and the, the timeframes. So that's just in there. If you're interested in looking at how long it takes. Second line from the bottom would be if a new wet weather treatment facility is built at the treatment plant, you know, that takes several years on top of additional separation projects. This was just one of many proposed schedules. So that's where we're at. I'm hopeful that we see some movement soon in a positive direction. But if you guys have any questions?
I've got two for you.
Okay, yes, sir.
My first one, have you had any experience with other communities where you've asked for an extension similar to the five, eight-year before, and have you seen positive reaction from the EPA with that? Or is this a first time?
No, this is, I, with, to answer your first question, yes. I've seen an extension granted, but it was more with the community that already had mapped out a 20-year plan and they asked for a 25. So it was kind of halfway through. They said, and that was with Ohio EPA too, that. But they had a very positive relationship. And I think that goes far. So that's what we're trying to keep.
Are you confident in, in that request at this point or?
In the, in the eight-year, yes. Because I think financial, the financial analysis will prove that it's not feasible. On top of the project they're asking for, you can't build it and do everything else that needs to be done in that five-year period.
My other question, I had asked the same question back July or August when you're here. And I don't know that you're any further able to answer. I just want to make sure. We talked about the differences between repairing the current wastewater plant and building a new one. I know the wet weather facility is going to play into that, whether it's done in conjunction with or separate. And I think the way I understood your answer back then was we really wanted to see what Phase Two was going to look like before we made a determination which way we were going to go. Are you still holding that?
What has happened since we had that discussion is initiating this facility's assessment, which is going to go look in to the plant. Are the, the tanks worth repairing? Or is it going to be more cost-effective and have a longer lifespan to build new? That's what this study will answer.
And you guys are doing that study?
Yes. Not me.
And you?
We have experts.
Your company?
Yes.
You believe that that's what you said was going to take eight to nine months to complete?
Yes. That there's a lot of data together and they have to look at
So we're really going to be making
pollutant loading and look at what constituents are flowing to determine the best process for treating the wastewater.
So we're really going to be making those decisions next spring?
Yeah. And that's what we need to convey to US EPA, how critical that assessment is. Because it's a lot of money. We don't want to recommend something that's not the best course of action, so.
Thank you.
Laura?
Yes, sir.
You said that, that they closed up, what, three CSOs?
Two.
They haven't reported those to EPA. Why not?
I'm not, I don't want to say for sure. Maybe Tim and Jeff have. But I think because they weren't completely closed, they could still, they can still undo what they did if needed.
Because that would be a plus because EPA wants to shut down, period.
It does, yes.
So.
It's a plus. But it also, I'm, it moves the flow around.
Yeah.
Like closing CSO five on the north side pushes, you know, because flow can't relieve itself through that outfall gate, it moves a little bit. So we don't see, just because it's closed, we don't completely lose that volume that overflowed. It just redistributes itself because water is sneaky and it'll find the lowest point to get out.
Oh, yeah, true.
Yes.
You said there's a decrease in water in basement complaints.
There is, according to the data we were given last summer. It really honestly depends on the type of rain that's happened. And I know since then, you've had some pretty significant events, so that could
Well, and, and we've got, we've got people who, since the start of this, have had sewage shooting up into their basement during storms. And that hasn't been corrected.
And that, I think I know what area. We've talked about that.
These, these are people's homes. They're getting destroyed.
That's a tough one. Because some of the, like, the treatment plant, the wet weather facility at the treatment plant doesn't directly tie directly to their homes. So it's a solution that could bring down the flow downstream to give more capacity, but it's hard to say. And that is a hard one to answer.
And all this costs an enormous amount of money.
Yes.
Which is a need for the community, correct?
I'm sorry?
We need things like this for the community, right?
Yes.
And it costs a lot of money.
It does cost, it's, it's, yeah.
I've got, I don't know if I've got a couple, but I asked this, I don't know, I think it was in the fall, we had a presentation here before I was back on council. But I asked if anyone knows the percentage of, that we have completed in the storm separation.
Percent of the city that's been separated? I don't have that number on the top of my head.
Okay, well, if you ever figured that out.
Yeah.
Let us know. And then the, and what I've recognized here, because I was on council years ago when we first started this, after we first started this, it, it sounded like we were talking about storm separation. Now it sounds like we're just talking about some separation and some treatment. Is, did that change or is that the way it's always been?
It has changed slightly, yes.
All right, I thought maybe I was going crazy.
No, no. But we, I think we all kind of, I know we had this discussion with the mayor probably maybe a year ago this time of, you know, trying to separate the entire city is not going to be cost-effective.
Right, right.
Although it would help some areas too. Just getting the stormer out, but you have to have somewhere to put it.
Right. And then one more, and I'll, I'll quit here. On your Phase One projects here on page three, you have improvement projects. But, and, and it may be before you guys got involved. But we also have done, I know we've done Charles Street and Spring Street, and I think Huggins.
Oakwood.
Oakwood. And, and I mean, I don't know.
And I think that was, I think those were done
Pre-Phase One?
Yes. I know we incorporated them when we updated the model to represent that they were separated.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, well, I just want to get credit for that.
Well, you do, yeah.
It's like we haven't
And that goes back to your first question, what percentage is separated? I can get you some numbers on that.
All right.
Or even a map, we got maps, so. Anything else? Thank you. Do you have any?
No, I, I just, the number, around 40% is the number we, I don't know if you've been knowing. I think you would be the, obviously, the expert. Everybody knows Jeff.
And Tim and they think it's, it's not quite half has been separated.
Right.
So, yeah. And then we've got plans to do more. We have that grant for the Northwest Trunk Line Two, which will make a difference too. We're going to be studying that also, so.
I'm sure I'll be back to give you an update, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Want to speak?
I've seen a lot of stuff on the street that flows into, right down toward the river on West Stone Street. You have seen a lot of the masks that the kids wear when they get off of the bus from what down. I think the school ought to educate those kids on literacy, really.
Not just kids.
Oh, yeah, but I've seen
Yeah.
Madam President, the number one thing that goes into the river is litter or cigarette butts. It's, it's incredible how many cigarette butts it, you know.
I believe that I see it as well. It goes right out in front of our house.
Yeah, but the masks are a big problem too. I'm always picking up masks downtown, throwing them in the trash. And I would encourage everyone to be a good citizen and pick them up and throw them in the trash and keep them out of the, can you do that? You can, you know, you just use two fingers, you know.
The germs don't get on those two fingers.
That's right. All right. Anybody else? All right, moving on. Before you, you have the minutes from February 1st.
Would you approve?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, Laura.
Do we have any communications or petitions?
Nope.
All right. Standing committee reports. Mr. Myers, do you have anything for platting?
Nothing for platting, ma'am.
Ms. Sherrit?
Nothing at this time for platting.
Mr. Myers?
Nothing for health and safety.
Mr. Wireball?
Uh, well, I guess just, we had meetings, I guess both Thursday and, well, two, two Thursdays there last. And, and we passed the enterprise fund reimbursements one meeting. And we discussed bids on the ARPA projects on the other. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Potter?
I don't have anything to report.
For economic development?
Correct.
Mr. Spiegel?
No report at this time for service committee.
Traffic commission, Mr. Mayor?
Nothing to report, Madam President, tonight.
All right. Report of officers?
Thank you. There we go. Well, first of all, before we start, I want to give a little tribute to Shirley Ostenheimer. I don't know, Terry, you remember Shirley well, I'm sure. And Joyce certainly does too. Shirley passed away last week. She had an incredible career here at City Hall. She was never part of a, of a secure job. She worked in manpower. But it's a testimony to her ability that she worked here 27 years. She was not in the union and she was not an elected official. So very, very talented person. And if you knew Shirley, you know she was a dynamo.
She also served as service director for about a year.
Yes, right. She served as administrative assistant, which is a difficult, I don't know whatever got into her to serve as service director, how she said yes to that, but, yeah. So great career and a great pub, a true public servant. So our sympathy goes out to this family of Shirley. So thanks for serving. And then family of Shirley, so thanks for serving. And then, Streets Department, I think, has done a very, very good job. We have some new folks that are taking over from retirees, and, man, they just hit the ground running and they learned it very quickly, and there was a lot of snow out there, a lot, very difficult, and it just kept coming, 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 and they, not only did they remove it well, they, I mean, they actually removed it. So you bend onto All Miller Park, you see a little mountain range of snow down there. It's pretty cool how they do that, but they work very, very hard and on, little sleep on those days, too, so thanks to Jeff Dunn and the whole crew. If you had a mailbox, we always lose a couple just because of the speed the trucks have to go and you have a heavy wet snow, it's, we're gonna, we're gonna knock a couple off there. We do apologize. We will repair or replace them, so I think we got a few calls on that this year. Thanks to Rotary. We've been talking about Kiwanis a little bit, but Rotary, many of you came to the Pancake Day on Saturday. It was named after Nick Vassal here a couple of years ago, longtime Rotarian. Big crowd. I don't know, Kevin, did they give you a total, how many?
Not yet.
But I know they were worried about running out of food when I left, and I think it was, and people were so glad to get out. It was so glad to see people enjoying each other's company. It's one of the things that we, you know, it's like the Bratwurst Festival, you know, you gotta keep these traditions alive, so. Let me keep on moving down there. So I will mention Kiwanis now, gotta give them equal time. I met with them to discuss plans on the splash pad and their intentions. They've got some great ideas. They want to make this project happen, and as they mentioned here, they want to pay for the entire thing, which will free some of our ARPA money up, so. So, we put that out to bid last week, and they will be open at March ninth. John and I also met with Josh Dyer and McKiever and Associates regarding plans for the Unger Park and All Miller Park Trails last week. They are working on a design and estimates, and then that'll go out to bid then, and then we'll get back to you before we put it out to bid, actually, okay? Before we will award the bid, that's it. I will be meeting with State Representative Reardon McLean about capital funding for local projects. One of the ones that's top on our list is the safer transportation out to the East Shopping Center area, so I'll keep you informed at the next meeting on that. And State of the City address will be delivered in two weeks, first meeting in March. And that's all I have tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for the mayor? Yes?
The street cleaning crews did get the streets cleared, but I personally watched them, pushed them straight into the crosswalks right over by the school, then trying to watch kids get through those crosswalks when they got back to school that next week was not good.
We'd already had the conversation last year. I know we got a bunch of new guys, but I'm
hoping Jeff Dunn reminds them that those crosswalks are just as necessary as the streets are.
Which school, are you talking about the elementary school?
Over at the elementary school.
Elementary school, okay.
Oh, yeah. Right up in there.
Okay, we haven't heard anything from anybody about that. This is the first we've heard of it, so.
They, I have watched it and I have had people contact.
Okay.
Mobile crosswalks and things, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a young people's knowledge.
Straight, straight into the crosswalk, we need to remind them that that's not...
Yeah.
You have to aim for, away from the crosswalk.
Okay.
But then there's also that corner out there across from Massey's, that big point of land that when they fill that, people can't see coming off the street.
Sure.
And that is a known issue, which is why it's not allowed to be dumped there, but it did get pushed into there as well.
You're talking about that little place where the...
That triangle, yeah.
The triangle, okay.
That is a known issue, so...
Okay, so we're looking at a couple of things I'll mention to them then. Thanks for bringing those up.
So those two, I mean, and I get it, they need, they need to be told that because you don't know.
Yeah.
You're just trying to get it out of the way, and it is new people.
And here's the nice thing about all these, they don't, they're always looking for feedback. They don't, they don't take anything personally, any criticism. They look at it all as constructive.
Well, no, I mean, but we just, we just figured out how bad some of those crosswalks were before, and now we've lost, what, half the crew or whatever, and got all new kids, and, you know, they didn't, they weren't here for that.
Well, let's, let's hope, I'll bring it up to them, but let's hope we don't have to put it into practice until...
Right, next year.
Next year.
And then, remember that there's, there's no, you're going for bids for the ARPA money, but we haven't...
Right.
...voted that that's even, so, yeah, it does have to come back this way, and it's...
Yeah, it will be, yeah.
And knowing that we have all these other things that the city isn't getting hit hard and having to pay money for, I mean, we do need to remember that when we're spending money.
As you've mentioned before.
And I will again.
Okay.
All right, anybody else?
We didn't forget.
I have concerns about, like, we got a neighbor lady, up in age, physically not in good health. She has a family in there with her, they aren't the best, and I don't like it when the plows fall on both sides of the mailbox and the person cannot get to it. Then when they do finally shovel their drive out, they have, they would have to walk in the street, walk in the snow in order to get to the mailbox. I mean, it's... And it's an elderly person on West Stone Street there.
Okay, yeah, and we, and sometimes people will call...
There's just snow on both sides of the mailbox.
They will call our office and let us know, then our guys will get right back out and take care of it, yeah. If you ever see any of that, I'd say, anybody who's watching tonight, just see any issues like that, our guys will get back out and take care of it right away. So thanks for...
But hopefully not again this year, it'll be next year.
Safety Service Director report?
I have Jeff's report here. Couple referrals. We'll start with a Stormwater Ordinance to Service Committee, and that's, we will put on the March third agenda. We're not going to be ready to talk about that this week. Also, just Service, I don't know if this goes to Service and Finance, both, but the seven dollar and twenty percent, seven dollar and twenty cent EPA stormwater fee expires, I think, June thirtieth, and we need to discuss that about possible keeping that going, because we're going to need that, obviously, to pay for Phase Two, so I'm guessing definitely Service. Brian, does that need to go to Finance also?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. The material, but the bids for the RFQs for the airport are out, and we'll be receiving them back by March fourth. We opened material bids today at City Hall. Utility maintenance was filled. Mike Billman was hired. He's already been on the job a couple of weeks now, doing well. We have a new firefighter, Ben Otto. He just started last week. Jeremiah Locke to the Solid Waste Department was recently hired, and a new police officer by the name of Dusty Johnson. We welcome them all. Eric Honnaker, longtime employee of the city of Bucyrus, I can't remember exactly how many years, but I think I want to say twenty-five or twenty-seven. Terry, would you know?
Probably twenty-eight.
Yeah. Great guy.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one? Do I hear thirty-two?
Does time fly? Yes.
Good guy, and he retired, and we congratulate him and thank him for his dedicated service. He's, was a great guy to work with. Fire negotiations are continuing, and police union negotiations began last week, and those will go on. We'll let you know when we, the results of those. A lot of water line breaks, maybe you've noticed that. Those guys have been up all hours of the night, gaining a little sleep. Anytime you have cold temperatures like that, that's what's going to happen, so especially for some of the old infrastructure. And thanks for the patience, the crews, if you're, if it's ten degrees out there and you're down in a hole, it's not a very comfortable, wet hole, it's not a very comfortable place to be, so if you see those guys, make sure you thank them. Zoning Administrator will be hired. We're going to be accepting applications for that position. They can be picked up in the mayor's office or the city website through March eighteenth, and you can call Jeff at four one nine five six two six seven six seven, extension two two four, if you have any questions. If you know anybody who wants a job as a lifeguard, summer's right around the corner, and we're going to need to get a staff for the pool hired, so there's applications in the mayor's office or actually on the city website, right, John?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. We did send letters to Partridge Road residents this week about a commitment on extending the water line to Partridge Road, and we're trying to see what kind of interest we have in that. If you live on Partridge Road, expect a letter if you haven't received it, and get it back to us with a yes or no by March first. Stetzer Road Project is in the final stages. We're doing pressure testing on the new water line, and they're, they were out there today doing more. There's two sections left to go. So, we should be turning that water on here fairly quickly. They still have to be connected, you know, obviously, to the house, so, so that's been a very successful program. Any questions for Jeff?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Water?
We got a president.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to refer the stormwater ordinances to Service.
Second.
No second.
Second, Terry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I'd also like to refer to Service and Finance, the EPA fee for stormwater.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Didn't that go to Service, too?
Yeah.
Service and Finance.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Germer?
Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, there's been discussions between the Bucyrs Tourism Board as well as the Chamber of Commerce, a plausible combination of the Chamber of Commerce and the Bucyrs Tourism Board, with the idea that tourism would sort of handle some of the more first Friday events, the tours, concerts, cemetery walk, those types of things. And, but one of the concerns is, obviously, City Council has the ability to allocate the bed tax, so I would ask to refer that to Economic Development, and then I would also invite the Chamber of Commerce as well as the Bucyrs Tourism Board to come discuss what that would look like and what council intends to do with the bed tax and those types of issues. I think the Tourism Board has sort of laid dormant for a couple of years, and I think that they have some ideas about how they would revamp that and what it would look like, and they've asked to come to council to discuss what their thought process was, and I think those both fall under Economic Development, so I would ask for referral for that. And then, as to eleven forty-five West Mansfield Street, the county commissioners today passed a resolution ordinance, something, they passed something granting the annexation, so procedurally now it will sit, once we get it back from, once the clerk of, clerk of, the commissioners delivers all of the paperwork back to the clerk of council, we have to sit on it for sixty days, and then the city council would have to approve a, approve or reject the annexation by an ordinance between that sixty day and a hundred and twenty day mark. So they beat us to the punch and will not be legislation necessary consenting to the annexation, because it's been granted. Now we would just have to approve or reject it within a hundred and twenty days.
Is that need done by an entire vote of council or through plating first?
I would refer it through plating and then bring it back to a entire vote.
Do we want to refer that now or do we want to wait till after the sixty days?
Might as well refer it now and have it in open projects, and that's all I have unless anybody has questions.
Who are you guys going to vote on with that Inez closing?
Getting close.
Yeah. I mean, you guys have to vote and then...
They have to have three readings, so tonight's the second reading, and then at the next council meeting, they will have the third reading and vote on it.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, yeah.
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
I was saying, Madam President?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to send that eleven forty-five West Mansfield Street to Plating Commission to be on the...
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I was going for the next thing. I was going to ask if I could make a motion to send the bed tax and the tourism stuff over to Economic Development.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Schiffer?
Thank you, Madam President. I gave you a break at the last meeting. I don't have a report, but I do have referrals that have to do with appropriations, and they're going to be in several funds, general fund and Water Works Fund mainly, but we've discovered a couple of items that were overlooked in the budget, and there was an error in another place in the amount. Somehow, one of the lines got shorted, and we just need to review these. I'll have the list for you and everything on Thursday night, but it's all appropriations, so.
Any budgets or appropriations?
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to, to appropriations to finance?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a brief insurance report. Any questions on that? Now I accept a motion to accept the file. So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Report summary from the fire chief, nothing from Chief Officer Ostenheimer?
We had it last week.
He did last week. Anybody have any questions on fire chief's report? We have a motion to accept the officer's reports.
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Any of the senators would like to come and point him and speak? No?
No.
Okay. All right. Yes?
You got your field stuff.
All right, consideration of repressed legislation for the second time.
Proposed ordinance number ten dash twenty-two vacating a street being one twenty-eight point thirteen feet in length on the west side and one twenty-eight point twenty-one feet in length on the east side and sixteen point fifty-one feet in width, beginning at the south end of Inez Street between part of outlet one oh six to the east part outlet of one oh seven, the south and in-laws eleven oh six, eleven oh seven, and eleven oh eight to the west. Proposed ordinance number eleven dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending and supplementing section nine nineteen point zero five of chapter nine nineteen Reservoirs of Title Three Water of Part Nine Streets Utilities and Public Services Code of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Bucyrs, Ohio.
I have a motion to accept the second reading of these ordinances. So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. These need to be referred back to plating for ordinance one zero dash twenty-two and health and safety for ordinance eleven dash twenty-two. Any public participation? Can I report amending legislation, plating?
Plating is favorable to proposed ordinance ten dash twenty-two vacating a portion of Inez Street.
Health and safety?
Health and safety is favorable to proposed ordinance eleven dash twenty-two updating and amending Bucyrs Codified Ordinance nine nineteen point zero five.
Do we have any old business we've got to bring up? Any new business anybody might bring up?
I have a question. You see, it's talking about the dredging of the river. How far do they go? Is that digging in and cleaning everything out?
They only did that at, at West Mansfield Street, down by what used to be Alway Tire. That's the only place that they did it, was underneath there.
So far.
Yeah.
So far. I don't know, seeing ice chests floating down from the ice plant, everything, you know, that stuff settles somewhere, and that just, to me, backs the river up.
Well, there's a safety come down there now.
There was a big wall jam with it, that on...
Was there?
Yeah.
Do the cities, counties kind of try to go together and get the whole river cleaned out? That would be nice, right? Yeah, okay.
We had a state thing a few years back where they hired people in to clean out a lot of the stuff out of the river, so it really helped them a lot.
I didn't know how often, or what you would say on that, how long it would go.
Yeah, that was, that was only that one section.
I have some...
Yes, sir.
Business, I have, I guess they should go in this, referrals, I'd like to refer the trash dumpsters on city-owned parking lots, enforcement of current ordinances pertaining to these dumpsters. Two. Is that public lands, I suppose? And I would like to look into the sales of derelict buildings, enforcement of current ordinances pertaining to derelict buildings. I'll look at that.
It's also public lands and buildings.
Health and safety, is it? And service, both?
That's where they were the last time.
Could be public lands, could be health and safety.
But if they're, if they're privately owned houses.
Well, that was always health and safety, though, yeah.
Because essentially, you're wanting to mitigate nuisance.
Right. Be healthy.
I think we should, there were some emails going around about the cameras in Schein's Park this week. I think we should talk about that. And I'd like, at some point, I'd like to talk about the payments to the Crawford County Economic Development Partnership. They were paying them, I don't know, we don't even know who they're gonna have in there, so. And then, we also had some questions about the splash pad design, fresh water versus recircu, recirculating. I think those are kind of already in, in there, but maybe not the cameras, that's probably public lands and buildings. But I'd like to talk about that still Thursday.
Okay, I apologize.
Yeah, I know, I went fast.
After the sales of derelict buildings?
Yeah.
To health and safety.
Health and safety.
Then to Schein's cameras to public lands.
And the splash pad.
The economic development, to finance and economic development.
What was the one after the derelict buildings that went to health and safety?
Cameras and Schein's Park.
And that goes to?
Public lands.
Okay, and then the last one was?
Two more. The partnership to finance and economic development.
And that goes to finance?
Finance and economic development.
All right. And the last one?
Splash pad, I would assume that public lands and finance.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, it's already in there, but...
I'll second all of those.
Pack your lunch Thursday.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. May I have a motion to excuse Mr. McKiever? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, referrals. We have the annexation of 1145 West Mansfield Street to Plating, stormwater ordinances to service, but that's not gonna be until May... March 4th. March 4th. The EPA stormwater fee to service and finance, the bed tax to economic development, appropriations to finance, trash dump, trash dumpsters in the city parking lot to public lands and buildings, the sale of derelict buildings to health and safety. I can't remember any. Cameras in Schein's Park, public lands and buildings, payment to the partnership to finance and economic development, and the splash pad, public lands and buildings, and finance.
That's only 10.
So, did we get the referrals? All right, does anybody have any other referrals? All right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All right, we are adjourned at... It is 7:56.